I'd like to call this August 1st, 2024 Board of Education Work Session to Order. Mr. Oniknostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Ms. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stavcek?
Ms. Stavcek is on her way. Traffic is fighting her.
And Mrs. Hausum?
And Mrs. Hausum is excused. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have need for Executive Session to start our meeting today to consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kilbane, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, take the role.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yeah.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries. We will enter into Executive Session at 6:35 and we intend to resume our meeting as close to 7:00 PM as possible. We are going to resume public session at 7:25 PM. I will note for the record, we can't tell time very well. Next on our agenda is public comment. I do have one slip. Mr. Shannon Burns. Shannon, you know the drill, name, address, and you have approximately three minutes.
President Miko, thank you so much. Shannon Burns, 1-8079 Brick Mill Run in Strongsville. Members of the Board and Administration, I wanted to come and address you today to ask you to reconsider the plan that was put in place for the school levy at the last Board meeting. What you didn't know now, and obviously all members of the voting block and all of the citizens of Strongsville know now, is that all of our property taxes have been increased significantly through this property revaluation. The plan that was put in place, that was voted on for request through the county last month or last meeting, first off, I think was flawed in that it was a permanent levy or a continuous levy. That, taking it out of the voters' hands after two times in a row of voters turning down the levy, I think that's a failed policy. But also, you put down a $9.2 million levy, and since then, now we know that the county has notified us that we have $2.4 million in additional revenue coming in. I believe that the prudent thing to do is for the Board to reconsider. Today, what the Board should be considering doing is putting forward and asking the county again for a 3.5 mil levy that I believe would then create a revenue-neutral solution, would not increase our taxes as citizens. We would have the same amount of revenue coming in as your proposal from last month, and we would not experience this huge tax increase, at least from the cities, from the schools' point of view. I think this is a good solution. It is a fair and it's a just one that takes into account all of the interests of all the voters in Strongsville right now, that have all been dealing with a lot of increase of prices at Giant Eagle, increase of prices in all across our lives, and having this huge property tax bill is not, I believe, the right course. Just to be clear, if you choose to vote for the plan that's in place, now that you know that the taxes have been increased and you're choosing a new tax, you will actually be responsible for raising our taxes here in Strongsville. It will no longer be what was deemed a reduction in taxes. It now will be an increase in taxes. That's not the way that the voters looked at it the last two times. We should reduce it. So once again, my proposal that I'd ask you to consider is propose to the county today in an urgent matter to ask what evaluation of a 3.5 mil levy would be. I believe that will come back and have a revenue-neutral solution, meaning that you'll get as much revenue as you had last year at 3.5 mils with this new increase. Then call a special meeting for Tuesday and approve that and put it on the ballot. Do not put a continuous levy on the ballot. Voters have demonstrated that they want to say in their voting, in their tax percentage, they do not want to have this a permanent one and putting it into the hands of the Board always continuously. So 3.5 mil, send it to the county. Once we have it to the county, put a special meeting on for Tuesday and get it approved, get it on the ballot. And folks like myself that did not approve of the levy the last few times, I'll support you, and I'll make sure that all of our friends, to the best of my ability, will support you as well to get this passed in November, and we can finally put this to bed and move forward. So I appreciate your time and happy to take questions, but I know as policy you don't, but still, what thought I'd offer it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shannon. Does anyone have any questions for Shannon?
I think it's more for George. I'm confused. Like, these new evaluations aren't going to be, or are they going to affect this lobby?
It's twofold. The new evaluations will increase inside millage to that $2.4 million. That's where it's going to come from. That was in our May forecast. We had anticipated a 27% increase in valuation, so that increase was part of our assumptions at the time in the May forecast. In the November forecast, we had a lesser amount, but we got, as we did the May forecast, we were able to get firm numbers from the county of the 27% increase, and it turned out to be a 28% increase when they put out their numbers. So the $2.4 million is coming from the 9.2, so the 4.9 mil levy that's on for consideration with the valuation, House Bill 920 will go into effect because of the increased valuation, so it'll drop the effective rate to about 3.8 mils. So we'll only be collecting about $9.2 million when it kicks in.
Well, that sounds useful.
If it kicks in.
Well, my point once again was that, first off, I meant, one thing I forgot to inform you is that, I believe it was in 19, Mr. Miko might be able to correct, because I know you were on the Board when this happened, there's precedent in the Board taking this urgent action of going to the county at the last moment and changing the valuation. I believe it happened. I believe it was the May 19 levy, but you could check me on that. It was very recently that we've done this before and made this decision at the last minute. And yes, I believe that if, right now, we're considering a 4.9 mil levy, dropping it to 3.5 with the $2.4 million increase that everyone's paying now, we're all paying more taxes because of that. The schools have been reporting widely that we're receiving $2.4 million more than we were expecting on last year when we did budgeting last year. We need a break. Voters need to have that break. We don't need to have higher taxes with the plan that was put forward last month when you didn't know that this additional increase was going to take place.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the July 23rd, 2024 Board of Education meeting. All district audio and video recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. Before we get to the levy discussion, you wanted to introduce one of our new employees.
Sure. So we've been blessed over this summer. Obviously, we always have annual openings, and Jenny and the team and the principals have done a great job filling all those openings, and we've welcomed a handful of new administrators to the team. Last meeting, we, the Board approved a promotion for one of our high school assistant principals to a new role, so we had that opening, and Mr. Winkler and his team diligently worked quickly to look to see if we could possibly find a high-qualified replacement, and we found it right from our own high school. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to give the introductions to our recommended candidate for that position.
Well, I think you said it very well already. I'll just add a few more things. So Mrs. Heather McGrath is on the agenda tonight for your consideration for our new assistant principal at Strongsville High School. I've known Heather for quite a few years. I think she just told me she's going into her 18th year here in Strongsville. She actually did her student teaching here in Strongsville as well, and it's just been a joy to work with Heather, and the amount of, you know, as teachers, as educators, I think, I take the most pride when we continue to evolve and learn and grow and do better for kids each and every day, and Heather exemplifies that in her role as a teacher. She's been on several district committees with me and challenges the things that we're talking about in a way that, how can we, I understand what you're saying, but how can we make this work for our students and make their experience better here in Strongsville? And she, you know, has been, spent the last two years on the district learning team with us, and her knowledge of what she does in the classroom with instruction and the way that she just has a great mindset about what students need is just, is awesome, and I'm just thrilled to have her in a different capacity as one of the leaders at the high school. So I'm going to turn it over and let Heather say a few words as we welcome her.
Hello, everyone. I'll move this down a little. So I just wanted to introduce myself. As Jenny said, I've been in the district now. This will be my 18th year, and within that timeframe, I witnessed my older daughter graduate from Strongsville High School in 2015, my stepson in 2016, and I myself am actually a Strongsville High School graduate. As a matter of fact, I know you're going to find this hard to believe, but my class is actually celebrating their 30th high school reunion this year. So I've been living in Strongsville for a very long time, and during that time, I've seen a lot of changes in Strongsville. You know, in the community, we didn't have the mall when I first moved here, you know, let alone the big expansion on the high school, but during that timeframe, there has honestly been one aspect of Strongsville that has never changed, and that's been this Board's, its employees, and the community's commitment to pursuing excellence in education. I want to thank you for, you know, letting me be a part of the history and for giving me this opportunity to be part of its future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So congratulations. We're looking forward to great things. It's always a nice story when we're able to hire within. It's an even nicer story when we're able to hire within a Strongsville alumni or grew up in Strongsville, so that's very nice. Congratulations. Next on our agenda is a resolution for an additional 4.9 mil tax levy for a continuing period of time for the purpose of current expenses. A resolution per the exhibit pursuant to Sections 5705.21 of the Revised Code submitting to the electors of the Strongsville City School District the question of an additional 4.9 mil tax levy, which amounts to $172 for each $100,000 of the county fiscal officer's appraised value, as certified by the county fiscal officer, who estimates it will collect $9,230,000 annually for a continuing period of time for the purpose of current expenses. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I have a question first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. For those who are paying attention, this is where we can talk about it. We have not voted on it. So we will start with Ms. Stavcek's question.
Do we know what the estimated amount per $100,000 would be based off of the public comment from today?
Yeah, so because of those, the new evaluations do not go into effect until December. We have to go with the evaluations that are currently in place, and with the current evaluations, it's $172 per $100,000. Once House Bill 920 kicks in, based on the new evaluations, this is my own estimates, but I'm estimating the effective rate to drop to about 3.8 mils, and then it will reflect $133.58 per $100,000 with the new valuations in effect.
So it'll go down?
It'll go down per $100,000, but as the values go up in the community, so it'd be roughly about the same. I even, I use my house as an example.
Right.
Where that value was, taking at the current value times 172 and taking at the new value times 133, it was roughly right around the same. It wasn't exact, but it was about the same.
But to be clear, the mil, the effective millage will go down.
Correct.
The dollar tax amount and/or the total tax collected will stay the same.
Same.
So when we, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the reevaluation doesn't change the tax dollar. It changes the effective millage because the house value has gone up. House Bill 920 makes sure that whatever levies are passed by the voter, that dollar amount stays flat, which is why we are in this discussion to begin with. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, I think the bottom line, just to be clear, is it's pretty much going to stay the same. Like, would I'm paying for taxes for the school is going to pretty much stay the same as it did last year?
I would like to make sure that we're extremely clear, because pretty much stays the same means a different thing to a lot of different people, and so I will start and George will add the flavor and color and the exactness. The sexennial reappraisal is increasing our home values. House Bill 920 mitigates that. So that, right now, the average for Strongsville is 28%, so the 28% increase in our house value does not equate to a 28% increase in taxes. House Bill 920 mitigates that, brings it down. The increase comes from inside millage. That inside millage does go up with the valuation going up. So everyone's property tax will be reevaluated based on that new evaluation so that we collect, so that the district and the other entities, the city, the county, the metro parks, collect the tax money. The thing that becomes difficult to explain is if your house decreases from the average, your taxes go down proportionally. If your house increases far above the average, your taxes increase proportionally. So it's not easy to just say this is the amount your house is going to increase. On the one hand, that seems like voodoo and very hard to understand. On the other hand, if you take two houses and last year they both were $100,000 in value, and one house puts on an addition and adds to the garage and goes up $100,000, and the other house doesn't do those things, and their value goes down should their property tax stay the same. And I think in that instance, most people would say, no, the house that goes down in value should pay less taxes, and the house that goes rapidly up in value should pay more in taxes. That's a judgment call. That is how it works. So hopefully that addresses some of our questions. I'm going to go ahead and get started with my comments, and I'm going to repeat what I, and I'll try to be brief and short or as concise. I don't know if I'll be brief. I'm going to start with what Auditor Keith Faber said that I quoted last time. Fiscal responsibility isn't optional when it comes to managing public finances. This is especially true for our school districts, which are entrusted with the vital task of educating our children. Taxpayers hand over their hard-earned money with the expectation that school administrators, and I will add, Boards, will use these funds wisely and sustainably to provide a quality education. Anything less is a breach of that trust. We happen to be considering this levy at the same time that the county has that sexennial reappraisal, and you don't have to go far in the news to find people are grappling with how they're going to deal with it. East Cleveland, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, George, it was 70% increase in values? It was a large, much larger increase than Strongsville. Gates Mills was 14%, and one could scratch their head and go, you know, how can a poverty-rich community have such a large increase in value? And, you know, Gates Mills, which is considered a very affluent neighborhood, has just small. And again, Gates Mills values have been rising all along, and East Cleveland's have not, and I leave it to the county and the state, because the sexennial reappraisal is a state legislative issue. But I do think it resonates with me that homeowners on a fixed income, homeowners that are retired, et cetera, these increases in many communities, Garfield Heights, for example, I saw on the news, their property taxes doubling. And if you're on a fixed income, you would reasonably wonder how are you going to manage that, right? So I do think that resonates. I don't think that's the situation here in Strongsville. We don't have cases of property taxes doubling, right? I looked at mine, my valuation, my actual increase is projected to be 4%, and there's that big asterisk saying it's, we're not really sure, but we think it might be around 4%. The state has been considering different things. One that the state is looking at is House Bill 263, which is called the, some people are calling it the 70/70 Plan, and what that says is if you're over 70 years old and your income is $70,000 or less and you've lived in your house for 10 or more years, your property tax will not increase. They haven't voted on it. There's over two dozen different things going on in Columbus to address this. The issues we're dealing with with the sexennial reappraisal are not very different than in 1976 when House Bill 920 was first passed. It was during a period of high inflation, and people were wondering how they were going to deal with it. As an example, and you all, all of the people on the Board and many in the audience know, I spend a lot of time scouring the news. Parma is grasping with the exact same issues. Their school district is grasping with the exact same issues. The difference is, and to cut to the chase, Parma chose not to go forward with their levy. Theirs is a new-money levy. They chose to pause, asking their community for additional taxes, to say, we're going to wait until this reappraisal is digested and wait until Columbus addresses it, et cetera. That is a different situation than what we have to consider here. We are not discussing a new-money levy. We are no longer discussing a renewal. We are discussing a new levy that is less than the previous levy. We can talk about the dollars and the mils, et cetera. I'm happy to talk about it, but at the end of the day, we are considering a levy that is one mil less. Because of all of these evaluations, it's not one mil in taxes left, less. It is approximately $700,000 less than what would have been collected by the earlier levy. In addition, we are considering it, we're asking the voter to consider turning it into a continuing levy. As we've said before, levies cost money. Whether they win or lose, this current cycle is costing the district, which means it's costing the taxpayer $100,000. I think it's reasonable to say we have another levy that is a five-year renewal. We'll have to have this conversation again. I think it's reasonable to come to the voter and say, we'd like to convert this. The articles that I've read about Parma resonate because they are extremely similar to the exact same conversations we've been having for the past close to a year now. "The school district is facing a budget deficit but has been budgeting conservatively," Smylek, who is Parma's superintendent, said. "And it won't be out of cash until 2027 or 2028." He said, "The increase in funding from the reappraisal will help them get to that point with fewer cuts than necessary." If you're looking for a fix that isn't going to mean coming back to property owners and asking for increases in property taxes, we still don't have that in Ohio. And so Shannon, where did Shannon, there he is. The concern I have is, you know, trying to keep it revenue-neutral is very attractive, but it disregards the facts of what we are dealing with in the district. Right now, we have mobile trailers at every school, at every elementary school. One of the elementary schools has two mobile trailers. At, which one is it?
Chapman and Surratt.
Thank you. Chapman and Surratt have two mobile trailers. We are expecting our population to increase by 1,000 students. The time to deal with that, the time to plan for that is not today. It was yesterday. But if we continue to push it off, that, those decisions will become harder and harder to deal with. And so, yes, we will receive more income from the reappraisal. We're not hiding it. George, when'd you put it in your five-year forecast?
It was in the May five-year forecast.
It was in the May five-year forecast. We have discussed it. We have planned on it, et cetera. The question is, do we want to start to budget today for the district that we want, that we all want, for our students, and start to plan the financial decisions we're going to have to make to address mobile trailers at every grade school, to address 1,000 new kids coming into our district, or do we want to wait until those decisions are crises and then the price of those decisions will go way high? I have said it many times, we can either budget $10 a year for five years to come up with $50, or we can budget $50 in year five. Part of my job as a Board member is to be reasonable with the taxpayer, and it's much more reasonable to ask the taxpayer to budget $10 a year than it is to ask the taxpayer to, well, we'll keep it revenue-neutral, but, you know, down the road, it's going to get worse, and then there's a surprise. There is never a good time to increase taxes. So that's why I'm still comfortable with the decision that we have crafted. I think it is a reasonable decision. I think it is pragmatic, and I think it's supportable. I have said enough, as usual. I have said too much, as usual. Does anybody else have questions or comments?
I have one thing I want to say. George, help me with the levy history here. So when we passed the new-money levy in 2019 that we have not been able to renew, and now we're replacing with this current proposal.
Right.
Before 2019, when was the last time we asked the city for new money?
2008?
2007.
2007.
2007.
2008.
That was renewal in 2018.
It was asked in 2000. The question is, when was the last time we asked? It was 2018. When the last time it was passed?
The last time we secured a new-money levy.
Okay, so I'm talking about securing it. I'm not talking about the one that failed in 2018. I have a son. He's a freshman in high school. I said this a year ago, and I'm going to say it again. He was born in 2009. The last time we had, if we don't pass this, we are operating on the same budget, less a couple of things that you inside millage things, that we were operating on in 2008. My son- My son was not born. We are all discussing how, how things, the prices of things are rising, right? That's true for me, too. I opened my envelope that had my house value in it. I did not like what I saw either. I'm dealing with the same thing that you're dealing with. But if we're all worried about the costs going up around us, the same is true for the school district. Everything we have in 2024 is way more expensive than it was in 2008. We cannot be asked to run a school district on a budget from, what, sixteen years ago? We can't do that. It's not feasible. And I don't think there's any way that we can continue on with our goal of being the excellent school district that Ms. McGrath, yes, was talking about before, if we don't have the funding to meet the needs of the rising costs here, too. So I feel like what we've put on here, in terms of, we're going to let, the village is going to go down, the village is going to even go down further because of House Bill nine twenty, we are doing everything we can to try to keep this at a level that can be sustainable for longer, but there's no way we can do it without this. And the fact that I'm having to have the same conversation again I had last summer is evidence of the fact that this is disrupting the functioning of the school district. Having to keep coming and having these meetings and having these conversations, it is distracting from the work of the board and the school district. We'd like the taxpayer to support financially, and I get, it's not easy, I don't like it, I'm with you, I live in the city, I have four children, I understand. But we have to support the education of these students. We cannot do that without this levy. And I'm very fearful of going backwards. And that's not what I want for my kids, it's not what I want for your kids. So I'm asking for the support of the community to pass this levy, pass in a continuous fashion, so that we can move forward and stop reviewing the past.
Thank you, Michelle. Very well said.
If this levy doesn't pass, if it were not to pass, when would cuts have to start happening? January 2025 of expenses?
So, as Auditor Faber has advised, you know, that's not something that we should just talk about. We have charged the administration to bring back recommendations. What I, what I will, what will resonate with me is not to say, we're going to cut this, and we're going to cut this, we're going to cut this, but to budget to a dollar amount. And so, if this levy fails, it will take ten million dollars out of our budget. And it will take ten million dollars out of our budget now. So I will, we've, we've already started that conversation, but I will expect to see, how do you budget ten million dollars? I'm not going to, I'm not, you know, I don't even want to discuss the programs that we would. I want to do that in a deliberate way. And then, at a future board meeting before the election, we would be able, as a board, to say, this resonates with us, this would be our intention, that if it fails, everyone is clearly informed by board action of what is on the line, if that makes sense. Any other discussion? Hearing none, George, please take the roll.
Ms. Stovchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda is cafeteria price increases. Mr. Anagostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. One of them, as you stated, is cafeteria prices for next school year. If you recall from last year, annually, we have to go into the new school year. We, we are required to complete a tool from the Ohio Department of Education called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool, to measure our lunch prices against the USDA target lunch prices. The lunch prices are required to be at or above the USDA target lunch price to receive our federal reimbursements. For the upcoming school year, 2425, the district will fall below the USDA target lunch price. The lunch price has increased from three dollars and thirty-one cents from two school years ago to three dollars and fifty cent, three dollars and fifty-six cents, which was last year. For the upcoming school year, it's increasing again to three dollars and eighty cents. So with that, we have to meet, we have to increase our weighted average to, at least to meet that target. So we're recommending a weighted average of twenty-five cents and increase. And what that looks like is for lunch, for elementary lunch, the current price is three forty, the new price would be three sixty. And for secondary lunch, and that would, let me back up, the elementary lunch would be a twenty cent increase, and then the secondary lunch from three sixty-five to three ninety-five would be a thirty cent increase, which gets the weighted average of the twenty-five cent increase to bring us to the USDA recommendation. And then breakfast is in line, and then the adult lunches would also change to be reflective from four dollars and eighty-five cents to five dollars. And then also, the à la carte prices would change incrementally. And then lastly, Donna Holland, our food service director, is trying to pilot a new program for next year to try and increase revenues for the program. It's, it's to target kids that traditionally pack lunch. It's Packers Pick Two, where they can come through the line to buy a milk, or vegetable, or fruit, at a discounted price of a dollar twenty-five cents for both. Typically, if you buy those two separately, it'd be a dollar thirty-five or a dollar fifty. So this kind of incentivizes kids that traditionally pack to come through the line to, to generate some additional income.
Any questions for George?
All right. Moving on to the next item, G2. It is, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Board of Education retains Nicholas Mancini, who's our current, who was our former assistant treasurer, as a fiscal consultant to the Treasury Department. Time will be needed and paid by invoice through accounts payable at a rate of forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents per hour, which was his current hourly rate. Later in the agenda, you'll be approving his resignation, as he was approved, approved as a treasurer in another district. So congratulations to Nick for moving on. He's had a great three to, three and a half years here, and wish him the best of luck.
Please, please make sure to extend our congratulations to Nick. We're really proud of him. We have a habit of training people for bigger and better things, and that's a good thing that we should celebrate. So we're excited for his new opportunities, and we look forward to having him come back and tell us all the great things.
And lastly, a discussion item for the annual OSBA, Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference, to select a delegate and an alternate for their annual business That will be held on November eleventh. At the next meeting, we'll be selecting those. Mr. Miko, I'll turn it over to you if there's any discussion.
Who wants to arm wrestle who for the honor of being the delegate?
Are you going?
I am not.
Are you going?
No. Well, Laura's not here, so I vote her.
So I'm delegate for Claris, so we just found our delegate and alternate, in whatever order you so choose.
I do know yourself, Ms. Kilbane, and Laura, and Mrs. Howes, have all expressed interest in going to the conference.
So it's you and Laura, in whatever order you so choose, Sharon?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I mean, I can do it again, she doesn't want to.
Why don't we have Laura? Because she's not here. So I like the idea of voting her into the position. And we'll make you the delegate.
The alternate for sure?
The alternate.
I have to be an alternate.
Yeah, that's what I meant. We'll make her the primary, and you can be the alternate.
She hasn't sent any kind of, not wanting to do that via text message, so we're good.
It would make me want to do it even more if she said no. So, but yeah, no, I did, I did speak to Laura, and as is our habit, she's willing to serve in any way, any way appropriate. So, that works?
Yeah, works for me.
All right, we'll have that on the next meeting.
Excellent.
And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Hearing none, we now get to what I think is the exciting part of the meeting, the superintendent's report.
You're, you're too kind.
Well, maybe it's because of the top, first topic on the exhibit.
That's right, it is exciting. So I'll, I'll go through the item, then we can talk about it. So be resolved upon my recommendation that the addendum to the agreement between Strongsville City School District and Serpentine Chevrelle be approved, as listed in the exhibit, and this is an action item.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Want to give us a description or a summary?
Yeah, so obviously, Bob Serpentine and Serpentine Chevrelle have been a great partner of the school district for many years. And part of their last donation agreement with us for naming rights for Paketan Stadium, the field at Paketan Stadium, was also to have naming rights for our concession stand. As the board knows, at the last meeting, we had a generous offer from Architectural Justice to redo the concession stand and renovate the concession stand at Paketan Stadium. However, they wanted the naming rights for that concession stand. Bob Serpentine was gracious enough to say he would give up his last year of naming rights for that, and we created an option where he could have signage on our press box. So that's, this is just a one, it's an addendum to the current contract, which basically enacts to one year, where he is going to have his, his advertising and naming rights to the press box in lieu of the concession stand.
And I just want to publicly thank him on behalf of the board. He is a, a great partner of our school district, and, you know, anytime we have these kinds of issues, he's always responded, you know, let's just make it right, and do what, do what's in the best interest of the school district. So he has our thanks. It does require a vote. You may take the roll.
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. And again, thanks to Bob Serpentine and the Serpentine Auto Group.
Absolutely. Next, I'll turn it over to Steve for his business service item.
Can I just take a little bit of board member privilege? Can we go out of order?
They said they wanted to stay even longer.
It's summer, it's summer!
I can see it on their face.
I think I'm going to make you nervous. Are you paying for sitting here?
I was going to suggest board policy, but, no, let's, let's do item fifteen.
All right, I'll turn it over to Jenny for item fifteen.
Okay. For your consideration this evening, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted.
And this does require a vote? No, it is...
It's a consent item.
We can change it if you want.
Oh, I'm on the wrong item. I'm still on the Serpentine thing. We'll leave it on the, well, no, they might not leave if we leave it on the consent calendar, just in case. So let's change it.
Can you give me a second?
Do you need a minute?
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Other than our thanks, and we're looking forward to a great school year. So, thank you very much. George, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. At this point in our meeting, we traditionally allow anybody who has homework, or anything else that they would rather be doing, to escape. It is a lovely summer night, and there's not a lot of them left. So thank you for your attendance, and we look forward to a great school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Enjoy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
They don't care what Steve has to say.
Back to you, Steve.
I just missed the sultry sounds of my voice.
All right. So there are four items in my report.
Back to business services. Back to I, business services, yeah.
The first item is a people transportation agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the operations manager be authorized to enter into an agreement with North Alliance Transit LLC for the 2425 school year for the transportation of special education handicapped students within Strongsville City School District to in-district schools, and also classes of schools out of the district. Transportation to in-district schools will also be provided for students becoming homeless while attending Strongsville City Schools, and now residing outside the district. This agreement is put in place due to the impracticality of transporting these students by Strongsville City School bus transportation. The second item is similar. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the operations manager be authorized to enter into an agreement with Suburban Transportation Company Incorporated for the 2425 school year for the transportation of special education handicapped students within the Strongsville City School District to in-district schools, and also classes at schools out of the district. Transportation to in-district schools will also be provided for students becoming homeless while attending Strongsville City Schools, and now residing outside the district. This agreement is put in place due to the impracticality of transporting these students by Strongsville City School bus transportation. The third item is an action item. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the purchase of LED lights from BMI Supply, not to exceed the total quoted price of thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, funding to be from the Permanent
Requires separate vote.
Apologies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Is the planetarium going to be awesome?
This is not the planetarium on this one.
No, is it the next one?
That is the next one. This one is our theater, is, and auditorium is going to be awesome. This is, of course, we addressed it during the renovation, it was like eight years ago at this point. But as times have changed, as our performances have grown, some of the lighting needs have also had to change. So we did a, an assessment of where we would like to be in our lighting program for the theater, and received input from administration at the high school, and also the stage crew, and theater, the people receiving stipends for the theater programs. And this is a combination of that, and this is the, the quote that we're putting forward to say that these are the, the lights and the, and the system that we need to match the quality of the performance that's being put on the stage.
Well said. Any other questions? Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Why is there a microphone not on the ground? Next to Jenny's foot.
We had an extra table that we removed for Laura.
Oh, I just noticed that later.
The fourth item, for your consideration, is also an action item. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves an LED Cove lighting system for the high school planetarium from Ash Enterprises International Incorporated, not to exceed the total quoted price of forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, funding to be from the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Out of, out of curiosity, are we going to have an awesome planetarium?
Are you going to keep asking?
Yes, answer your question. So this, this has been a few years coming. As technology has changed, the lighting system needs to change. The issue is the coating on the old light bulbs, halogen light bulbs. The, the bulbs being created now are not of the quality that they used to, because the technology has moved on, so very few manufacturers are, are doing... because the technology has moved on, so very few manufacturers are, are doing this any longer. So there's an actual coating that goes on the old light bulbs. Well, those coatings are just burning off as the light bulbs are on at a very fast rate. And we're having to replace those light bulbs at a, at a rate that made us look at this LED system, which is much more sustainable, and say that now is the time to pull the trigger on this. The availability of the old light bulbs is becoming less and less. The cost is going up. And yes, I believe this is a good return on investment, and we'll make a, a great planetarium even better.
And we don't want to put ourselves, you know, to any specific year, but the LED lights last much longer than anything else. So although the, although these are both large ticket items in and of themselves, over time, they will save us money.
Correct.
Any other questions? Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. We do have two items under student services. The first, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Maxim Healthcare Services, who operates a healthcare staffing agency and employs licensed healthcare personnel to provide personnel to supplement nursing services. The second item is be it resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for the special education and related services for replacement of a student with disabilities for the upcoming school year in the amount of $98,026.20 and extended school year in the amount of $8,168.85 for a total cost of $106,195.05. Any questions on the student service items? With that, I'll turn it over to Jenny for this month's human resource items.
Thank you. Under human resources, I have the following recommendations this evening. Under one, we have the resignation of our leadership staff member. As George already shared, Nick is leaving us, and wish him all the best. Under two, we have resignations for certificated staff. Three, resignation for non-certificated staff. Four, resignations for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under five, we do have the retirement, way early, but a retirement of our certificated staff. Six, retirements for non-certificated staff. Seven, appointments for administrative staff. Eight, appointments for certificated staff. Under nine, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Ten, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Eleven, appointments for our game workers. Under 12, we have our stipends for instructional coaches. Thirteen, volunteers. Under 14, we do have one revision to the May 23rd agenda. We are removing one of our cheerleading advisors from a 1.0 to a 0.5 for cheerleading. And then you are already voted on item 15. And that concludes my report.
And with that, there's nothing under technology for this meeting, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
Motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented and/or amended. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. We'll note for the record that we did vote on the memorandum of understanding separately, so that is not part of our consent calendar. I don't remember any other changes. We do have, are there any otherwise? Are there any removals from anyone? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Board of Education, Board Bylaws and Policies. We have a number of bylaws and policies on first reading. They are listed in the agenda. Michelle, did you have any comments on this group?
No, most of these are just updated to meet the requirements of the law that have changed. The, the ones that we had most discussion about in the meeting are the ones that we'll go over here in a second.
And then the next one is Board Bylaws and Policies, third reading. There are two policies that are, time is of the essence, so we are waiving the first and second readings. Those policies are revised policy 5136, cell phones. 5136, or cell phones used to be called personal communications devices, and we realize that's really tortured and hard to say, and nobody knows what they are anymore. So we just call them cell phones. We have, as a board, have dealt with the self, do I have to do a motion? Is this, oh, yeah, thank you. So we'll do the motion first. Oh, wait a minute. Does the, the other one is just first reading? Thank you. This one's the motion. Okay, I know where I am. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. As I said before, these two were waiving first and second reading. One on cell phones, the other one on drug testing of students. Michelle, did you have any comments on these? As, as our, as one of our board policy members?
Not, not, not much. I mean, we've already had a large discussion about the drug testing, so this is just formalizing that. And then the cell phones, I think based on a lot of feedback from all groups, that it, it was time to firm up this policy and look at how it's gonna be implemented in this upcoming year. So that's the impetus for this discussion and for moving it along now.
It looks like other districts are also implementing stricter cellphone rules as well. I saw Cleveland City Schools is doing something with the pouches that lock throughout the day. While this isn't that necessarily.
Yeah, a lot of them are just more strict than us, actually.
That we're not the only ones making that choice.
And in fact, the Columbus passed a law, so we're just getting ahead of it, that we do have to. We have to have a policy. They have a model policy. But as a board, we're trying to balance the needs of recognizing that cell phones are pervasive technology, that our students need to learn how to use well. But I know, I know, I've been aware, and I think all of us have been aware recently, there's been a lot of research or a lot of understanding of how addictive some of the social media and things like that can be with cellphone use. So I think it's important that we give our, especially our high school and middle school educators some tools to help with that. And the drug testing is the same. We've, we've talked about that quite a bit. But we wanted to have both of these in policy, both of these policies in place before the start of school so that our principals and our teachers can make sure parents and students are aware of, of how these policies will affect their day to day. Any other questions or comments? George, take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Oh, my computer is all over the place. Board of Education miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous? Any, any updates? Everyone should have received an email about the sales tax holiday. It is a week long this year. It's already started. And the one thing I would, I will highlight is, is I always forget the exact mechanics. It's any school-related item up to $500, that's per item. You can, you, you as a parent can invest in your student's education as much as you want. It is not a $500 overall limit. It's a $500 item. So obviously, take advantage of that if you can.
I believe they expanded it to some sporting good items as well, and.
Correct.
Also restaurants.
So and again, Dan, Dan sent out an email about it, so the links to all the rules, et cetera, are in there. But time is ticking. I don't have any others. Anybody else? Next on our agenda is? We do not have need for executive session a second time. Next on our agenda is adjournment. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:22 PM. Have a nice evening and enjoy the summer weather.